We're a little late. And actually, before I call our City Council running the order, I want to make an announcement about -- someone may have looked at the agenda already, but item number five is a public hearing and then later there's a regular agenda item, same topic. And it's about the properties of the property down at 259 East Houston and 750 South Main. That's been controversial in the past. It's on the agenda, so I'm going to read the whole, the entire items. However, the last few words that we put these items here is that the applicant has withdrawn the application for the zoning change. Now, it's on the agenda, so I'm going to read it, but it's moot because he's already withdrawn his application. So, that's all. I'm going to move on with our City Council meeting. If ever you want to please rise for an indication and a reason to apply. "Lord God, we thank you for the chances that you give us every day to follow in the footsteps of our Savior. We pray through your guiding hand as we make these decisions tonight so that we may work your will. In the precious name of Jesus, thou Lord, we pray. Amen." (affirmative)
"We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
(inaudible)
"On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible."
Thank you very much. (inaudible) All right. Well, this is, we have some citizens' communications. Is it just the two?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, these apply directly to an item that's numbered nineteen on the agenda. Nonetheless, because that's going to come up after our executive meeting, I'm going to go ahead and let these two individuals go forward with their three-minute talk. And so, Mr. David Gibbs, three minutes, sir.
I just wanted to address the council and just kind of figure out what you guys are up to as regards to the upholstered girl because I mean, it's on the agenda, but I know you guys come to this to be a part of this council, to do something good for this community. I know you didn't come up here to find something to waste your time for in the evenings, but I would think that you guys would put a, put this in high gear, do something a little faster, a little quicker than what this slow motion thing going on with. I'm amazed how slow this has gone and I'm amazed that this business was close. I just can't believe the City Council can sit around and allow this to continue. I don't care what process you got to go through, but it shouldn't have taken this long. (inaudible)
And Ms. Tiffany Pomp.
Can I ask questions or how does that work?
No one can answer you. Well, chances are we can't answer you when you're going to make any decisions. We can state facts, but we can't really deliberate on if it doesn't require deliberation. So, if it doesn't require deliberation, that's a factual answer to that's where we are.
Okay. Well, my question to you all is how can you all go into executive session and you have all this talking about my business, but you won't answer any emails back from me?
That has to do with executive sessions. (inaudible)
Okay. My next question is, my, it's not really a question, it's more a statement. My application for a certificate of occupancy costs eighty-eight dollars. That's what I paid. How much more has been spent on legal over and above that eighty-eight dollars for our city as a whole to try and keep me out of Van Alstine?
We don't have any information on that. You may do your answer.
Okay. Well, I've asked for that information already, so that should be coming. So, I'm just letting you know and kind of prepare for that because I'd like to know exactly how much has been spent to try and oust a upholstered girl out of Van Alstine over an eighty-eight dollar certificate of occupancy because to me, it just seems kind of futile to all of you people who are paying your tax money in to a lawyer to try and oust a business that's already put thousands of dollars back into your town. It just doesn't seem economically correct to me and it's just not good business sense or common sense. So, basically, it's kind of all I have to say. I just don't understand.
This is the only two that I have. We're going to move on now to item number five, which I told you a little bit about already, but I do have to read the whole thing because there's a legal discretion. Item number five, this is a public hearing, conducted public hearing regarding request by the owner agent of property described as an approximately one point zero one nine-nine-eight tract of land from the single-family residential district slash one, or dash point rather, parentheses, SF, zoning to single-family residential district dash zero lot lines homes or SF dash C, parentheses, zoning. Property is described as South Side Edition Block Part thirteen, one zero six point seven by fifty-one point five by one zero six point seven by fifty-three, and South Side Edition Block thirteen, yes, one hundred six dot seven by fifty-three, more commonly known as two fifty-nine East Houston Land and seven fifty South Main Drive, to change the current zoning of single-family residential district dash one, or SF one, parentheses, to single-family residential district dash zero lot line homes, or SF dash C, parentheses. Once again, parentheses, the applicant has withdrawn the application for zoning change. You can have comments, questions, if you'd like, but it's kind of a new subject. So, second request, any comments, questions? And third and final request, seeing no hands, we can move on to the consent agenda. We have several items on. Actually, the items are running, coming off because they're going to need some more discussion. And if any one on the council hears any of these others that I read, that want the consent agenda, then we can pull them off. But item number six on the consent agenda is considering taking the action necessary regarding approval of minutes from August second, August ninth, twenty sixteen, word session, a work session it means, August ninth, September thirteenth, twenty sixteen, and equally it means from August fifteenth, September seventh, nineteenth of twenty sixteen, special call it means. Item number seven, considering taking the action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution declaring the Van Alstine leader of the official newspaper of record for fiscal year twenty seventeen. Item number eight, considering taking the action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Grayson County for emergency medical services for fiscal year twenty seventeen. Item number nine, considering taking the action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Grayson County for fire protection services for fiscal year twenty seventeen. Item number ten, considering taking the action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance approving EMS boundary service area from White. Those are all the items that remain on the consent agenda. The last two members of eleven twelve will go on to the consent agenda. We have any discussion, discussion, Dr. (inaudible). All these items that I've just read, consent agenda. Item number seven. All right. Item number seven also, we'll go on to the consent agenda. So, as to item six, eight, nine, and ten, is there any discussion or (inaudible)?
I have a big motion. We pass six, eight, nine, and ten.
(inaudible). Twenty-second, all in favor. Those items on the consent agenda have passed. Now, as to item number seven, considering taking the action necessary regarding authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution regarding the Van Alstine leader of the official newspaper of record for fiscal year twenty seventeen.
I'm not, I don't have any objection to doing that. I would just like to look into the possibility of whether there's, whether the readership is better from the Democrat, from Sherman, or the Van Alstine there, which one gets to more people. And I think we should make our own basis to which one, based on which one has the most people that gets to, or if it's considered that.
So, are we going to, all right.
We can go ahead and pass this and then just look into, have somebody look into which, what the, what do you think, what do you call it?
Reversal.
Okay, yeah.[679.23][679.23](laughing) Whatever they say. But anyway, do it that way and then we can come back with another one saying we don't change our mind after that. This is two thousand seventeen, so it's (inaudible).
Van Alstine circulation. But you're talking about Van Alstine circulation, right?
Yeah, whatever Van Alstine circulation.
Is that, is that a motion, then, to go ahead and pass this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and motion pass this and then look into whether Democrat has (inaudible).
Do you want to have a second? Do you want a second? All in favor. It passes unanimously. And so, we'll be looking for statistics as this readership. Item number eleven, considering taking the action necessary regarding amendment of Van Alstine Community Development Corporation fiscal year twenty sixteen dash twenty seventeen operating to increase wages and work hours for the administrative coordinator. We have a presentation. We should speak on that.
I don't really have the presentation, but I can just kind of explain a little bit the best I can really, because it's back to the president, the CDC, so feel free to chime in. I'm glad to speak. But, yeah, we, the CDC and the EDC have separated into two, and we've always been, but we're looking at how to move forward. The EDC is going to be hiring somebody to handle EDC business, industrial manufacturing, employment, creating jobs. So, the CDC is going to be focusing more on commercial and retail and community involved here. So, committee, we discussed it with the CDC board, feel the additional hours needed in order for us to do our job effectively.
And listen, in this part of the act, also. All right. We have Van Alstine, the CDC, topic, most budget open duty, and plus one from, oh, it's one budget open, two pages, one, two pages.
Listen, I have a question about that. So, what do you mean by focus on commercial?
If somebody calls in and wants to, you know, like, Golden Jake, that's not an industrial, it's not going to be a big employment base, so the EDC is focusing on creating jobs, bringing in industry. The CDC is focused on, so that nobody just looks and cracks Golden Jake, for instance, and would be filtered to the CDC. Right now, I mean, the CDC has been working on parks, various community development projects, but what we feel is with EDC's addition of, well, they're going to be hiring us having someone similar to that role will be able to handle any kind of smaller retail, if I want to say office, you know, office use. But do you think it's (inaudible)?
I guess if you have a question for Julie.
Yes, sir.
Does that, I understand that the statute that defines what the CDC can do, what EDC, or the CDC can do, focusing on (inaudible).
Yes, CDCs can actually do more types of projects than EDCs can do, and they do still have to follow certain procedures and fit within the guidelines, but they do have more ability to participate in more retail, commercial, parks, those types of projects that the EDC is, has more limits on.
Okay. So, this, always describe it as retail, commercial described, that's not going to step on the toes of the EDC, that's not going to fall within their jurisdiction, what they're in charge, and that is within the realm of the CDC?
It is really, the only way that EDC could participate in that type of project would be if they were going to contribute towards some infrastructure that was needed for a retail project, like if a road or a water line or something like that was needed, that could be infrastructure and the EDC can do that, but the CDC can do more things than the EDC can do.
Oh, yeah, the CDC has its own assets, so you should, they have some agreements this time. Has committee just been a part-time?
Uh, temporarily, yes. During this transition that we've been going through with the CDC and the EDC, she has been, and you know, we put a lot of thought into this and we're all working very closely with the EDC and, you know, we feel like, how are we going to be at this split, this transition? But, you know, it's a good thing. They're hiring somebody that's going to be focused on bringing employment base, maybe in Van Alstine. He can spend his time on shoes and their time doing that, and we can focus on community development and the smaller retail, potentially office.
And if I may ask, what kind of wage increase?
Uh, the wage increase, five percent.
Well, I know you guys watching, but it's (inaudible).
Yeah, and we're going to have, rather than an annual review, we're going to have a review six times to see, you know, what is going on with you, so we're going to be working very closely with her. We feel very good about her doing this position. So, we're looking forward to this year.
Who, who want a question, a comment? Entertainer, motion regarding item number eleven. She had a motion, there's a second. Second, all in favor. It's unanimous, and so, item number ten, item number ten has passed. Item number twelve, considering taking any action regarding appointing Robert Jaskin to the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation Board of Directors. Well, we all know Mr. Jaskin. We don't believe anything he says or not.[1112.13][1112.13](laughing)
All right. I think the motion for appointing Robert Jaskin is (inaudible).
All right, we have a motion and a second. If he's Jaskin, you're going to have to (inaudible).
That's great.
Otherwise, all in favor. All right. And this is, so that's four of the five. Mr. Jaskin is standing, and so, their motion passes. Now, moving on to, moving on from the, well, moving on to the regular agenda is item number thirteen. And here we go again with a piece of property, and once again, I'll say this application is going to go along, but I'm going to read the whole thing. Considering taking any action necessary, including but not limited to accepting withdrawal of the application for a zoning change regarding a request addressed by the owner agent of the property described as an approximately one point zero one nine-nine-eight tract of land from the single-family residential district dash one, or SF one, parentheses, to single-family residential district dash zero lot line homes, or SF dash C, zoning, parentheses. The property is described as, is described as South Side Edition Block Part fifteen, or Part thirteen, one zero six point seven by fifty-one point five by one zero six point seven by fifty-three, and South Side Edition Block thirteen, less one hundred six point seven by fifty-three, more commonly known as two fifty-nine East Houston Land and seven fifty South Main Drive, to change the current zoning of single-family residential dash one, or SF one, parentheses, to single-family residential district dash zero lot line homes, or SF C, parentheses. And so, this is moot, I guess, or do we have to take any kind of vote on this at all, Julie?
You should move to accept withdrawal of the application.
Okay.
I'll do it. Do we know why you think you might, you say?
I didn't, I didn't speak. Okay. Not sure. So, a motion to accept withdrawal? We have a motion, so a second, we have a second, all in favor. It is unanimous, and so, item number fourteen passes. Next is item number fifteen, department. Judy?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. For the month of September, two thousand sixteen, we hosted this program in the library. Slightly over sixteen hundred people came through our doors. Our circulation was around two thousand one hundred forty-two, with forty-six communication to find the library card. Also, in September, the Prince of the Library Book Sale was held, it was very successful, bringing in about eighteen hundred fifty-three dollars in book sales alone, and donations and memberships totaled in much two thousand and hundred and fifty-seven. Great opportunity to turn out on that. The library board met on the supercomputer room, including both the circulating policy as well as a quick news agreement toward a (inaudible) program, which will be (inaudible).
Hey, Judy. Steve?
Mayor, City Council. Secon contractors are in process on Cannon Line Road cutting off, cutting off and capping the four-inch water lane, water line that was replaced, being replaced by the sixteen inch water lane. When they complete that, they'll be working on the coordination system for well six. Our crew is completed, working on sewer collapse on the west marshal today. We're also working on sewer blockage on Austin and South Preston. Working on, I've been working on with Jennifer and Brian, Public Works Service Ordinance, Service Orders Program, help take the kids' work orders, complete them faster and get reports back in on them. Working on schedules, we're after meter readings, replaced five damaged fire hydrants, three of my vehicles, one is just a damage rebuild, if you know, and knowing there's one to be replaced. The completed smoke testing on the sewer system is revealed with several inflow problems. We're preparing a solution for repair, reduce the water, the infiltration and inflow to the sewer plant, and we'll add that (inaudible).
You've made some, you've made quite a big round, haven't you, on that inflow problem?
We get it pitched and then no one shows up, so we're fighting.
Thanks, Steve. Chief?
Mayor, Council. Police Department had forty hours of training this month. We had thirty-two incidents. We answered seven hundred calls for service. We had two events in this last month, was the fall draw and also our national night out, which went great. Communications, one hundred twenty-one nine-one-one calls. They had eight hundred fifteen calls for service. Their training hours were ten. They answered two thousand eight hundred fifty-three calls by phone. They had thirty-three report requests, and then municipal court had a hundred fifty-two cases closed.
Jennifer?
For the month of September, the administrative department answered nine hundred and fifty-six calls in twenty-six operating days, responded to fifteen requests for public records, accepted one zoning text amendment request, one zone change request, one specific use permit application, and one replat. We issued two commercial building permits for mechanical, electrical, signs, demolition, and we've accepted five certificate of occupancy applications. We have three residential permits for plumbing, re-roofing, foundation repair, fencing, or miscellaneous accessory structure, for a total of ten permits. We have accepted and entered nineteen new utility accounts, two utility account transfers, and thirteen utility account disconnections. We processed seventy-four purchase orders, issuing sixty-seven general fund checks, thirty-four water fund checks, one court technology fund check, for a total of a hundred and two checks. And the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet here at six-thirty on Wednesday, October nineteenth. They have a pretty full agenda. They'll be discussing a Howman, the Howman replat, which is on John Douglas near Austin, a Uselton zone change, which is on South Waco, the Dragonfly House specific use permit, a zoning amendment, a zoning text amendment, the Washington Estates Phase One final plat, and the Washington Estates Phase Two preliminary plat.
I question. Lynn, you got a question?
We are having a meeting tomorrow with Stone Hollow, and we talked about the final walkthrough, and we're releasing lots for that. I know there's been six permits, tremendous, final releasing infrastructure. We're going to do the final walkthrough tomorrow on the (inaudible), so that should be clear in the next twenty days or so. Lagan has passed a water test so far, so if we get there, we start paving, (inaudible) and Washington State's people there, and others are coming around, looking to start developing lots.
(inaudible).
First, I'll do the fire department board. Lieutenant Powell had to step out and head to the call. Mayor, Council, the city fire department, they had twenty-one fire incidents for the month of August, I mean, September, twenty-one fire incidents, two asthma, and three fire inspections. Nine-one-one calls, there were thirty-eight within the city of Van Alstine, fourteen in Howe, eight in Gunner, one in Tom Dean, two in Watright, and one to, one to Tioga. We transported ninety-two, twenty-three were non-transports, fifteen were no patients, we didn't call for any helicopters, and we referred to another agency. Altogether, we had sixty-four emergencies and sixty-eight transports. And that is it for the fire department. As far as city manager's report, with another positive pool, the West Nile virus will be sprang on the eighteenth, which is next Tuesday. Obviously, they have press release out.
Lynn, you got anything?
We are having a meeting tomorrow with Stone Hollow, and talk about the final walkthrough, and we release a lot for that. I know there's been six permits, tremendous, final releasing infrastructure. We're doing the final walkthrough tomorrow, and the pipe course we got, so that should be cleared in the next twenty days or so. Palladium has passed their water tests so far, so if we get there, we start paying departmental, and Washington State's people there, and others are coming around, looking to start developing lots.
Thank you.
First, I'll leave the Fire Department board, Lieutenant Powell had to step out, had to call. Mayor Council, the Fire Department had twenty-one fire incidents for the month of August, I mean, September, twenty-one fire incidents, two hazmat, and three fire inspections. Nine-one-one calls, there were thirty-eight within the city of Van Alstine, fourteen in Howe, eight in Gunner, one in Tom Dean, two in White Rock, and one to, one to Tioga. We transported ninety-two, twenty-three were non-transports, fifteen were no patients, we didn't call three helicopters, and we referred to another agency. Altogether, we had sixty-four emergencies and sixty-eight transports. And that is it for the Fire Department. As far as City Manager's Report, with another positive pool on the West Nile virus, we'll be sprouting on the eighteenth, which is next Tuesday, I'll be sending that press release out, and want to congratulate the chamber on another spectacular follow-up. Thank you.
Well, the first things that came to my mind were the Baldroll, and then National Night Out, and there's not a department in the city that didn't anticipate that, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce did a wonderful job with Baldroll. It was great, and I want to thank everybody for more people than I could possibly guess. And I want to thank everyone who attended this, too. Without your attendance, of course, there wouldn't be much point, and any other, and very little, so I thank you all.
So, representing Keith Van Alstine Medical, we are working on coordinating what's on recycling, so we'll be watching for notices on that, see website, our Keith Van Alstine Medical, as we're side firing on this, and it would either be the November the fifth or November the twelfth, because those are Saturdays.
I've forgotten, hey, I got something in the mail, an invitation to Lord's Acre Festival with First Methodist Church, and hopefully you'll all see something, but it's at, you know where the First Methodist Church is, the event's going to take place Saturday, November fifth of this year, from nine AM to noon, and that's a, that's a very nice event. And so, the next thing on the agenda is going to be an executive session. And so, I'm going to read this to you. In accordance with Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, in parentheses, open meetings law, the City Council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to applicable laws. All items, item number eighteen, it's all items below for executive session. Pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, in it, subtitled five-five-one, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. A, Section five-five-one, dash zero seven-one, consultation and returning, in parentheses, regarding, one, enforcement of zoning ordinance and the code of ordinances, two, dilapidating structures, and three, work adjustment appeal and procedure for late filing appeals. And so, at this time, we're in a session from the regular agenda, from the council meeting, the time is now seven oh five, and I anticipate we'll go into executive session at seven fifteen. And I'm not sure how long we've been in there, you're welcome, of course, to stay, but maybe you'll want to come out of the executive session. Oh, all right, well, you know, I'm sorry, I just told you you're welcome to stay, however, we don't have the conference room available to us that we normally do, and so I'm afraid all of the council must be, I'm sorry about that. Or, I mean, I don't want, I'm sure you don't want to stand back outside. Mayor, so are you picking us up? I shouldn't have said that. Thanks, everyone, thank you very much.
So, nice to meet you, thank you all for the opportunity, thank you.
One, East Marshall Street. Before we take this vote, I'll say this, it's my, my opinion, and others can say theirs, but I don't think that we want to set a precedent for accepting late filing appeals. That's going to cause too much trouble very long, potentially too much trouble. And also, the zoning amendment requested by Mr. Jaskin, the, that's already underway with the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that's, that's in the works already, and for actual appeal before the zoning board adjustment, wouldn't come about earlier than that resolution anyway. And so, that's, that's my impression, but I'll invite comments or questions from the local, the council.
And also, as a comment, the, applying to the zoning board is required two hundred dollar fee, which you would end up, if it wouldn't accomplish anything, if the other way's faster and better, then it would be not a good investment.
Any comments or questions?
Say that we arrived, I believe this is the most expeditious route to take to get it resolved, and just wanted everybody to know that that's what we're doing, we're trying to get it resolved as quickly as possible.
I'll, I'll say also, it is my feeling as well, that we want to do things in the best way for the businesses of Van Alstine, and it's very unfortunate that we have to be so diligent with the laws and the codes of the land, and, you know, we've worked hard, I know it seems like it takes a long time, but I agree with Mr. Jaskin as well, that I feel like we've come to the quickest and best way, I mean, it doesn't feel very quick, believe me. I mean, we, we feel for folks for the girl in the situation as well, but it's, it's not fun, but we definitely have worked towards the best route for her and the city, and I feel that we've come to that, that juncture.
I also want to add, I think there's no disagreement that our, that our definitions for our uses, that are allowed in the city, those, that set of definitions takes maintenance. And so, that's what we're, that's another thing we're doing, that's what planning and zoning has been done, is maintenance on that set of definitions of the uses. That's going to be ongoing forever. So, I'd say, any, anyone else?
I just wanted to reiterate that this, that the course of action which we are choosing to take, with the denial of the late file, really is going to be the most fastest plan to get this resolved, and just to go with.
If there's nothing more, I would continue motion on the point one, where to accept or disallow the late filing. Twenty-two, forty-one, twenty-two, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, all in favor. Okay, all in favor. It is unanimous, and the motion to disallow the late filing appeals is passed. Now, we have item number twenty, which is simply consider and take any action necessary as a result of the executive session, and there are a couple of housekeeping items that I think we are going to have to take.
I think they were all just addressed. I think they were all just addressed.
Okay, so, who else do we need any? We've taken care of the ten with the one vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, then, last ten is item number twenty-one, we undertake a motion to return. So move. All right, we have a motion, is there a second? All in favor? Unanimous, all right, we are, thanks very much, and the time is? Eight twenty-four. Eight twenty-four PM.